And I think, Mrs. Carmody, we're all set, Mrs. Carmody.
And the time is seven oh four.
Exactly what I have.
Okay.
Seven oh four. I'm still going to call the meeting to order. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? If you can stand, you can put the flag out, please.
I have it up.
Student reps, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the states of America, and to the one nation, one nation, God.
Mr. Patrick, please do your roll call. Did you hear me, Linda? Okay, yes.
Whoa.
Did she hear me?
No, I didn't. What was that?
I was asking for a roll call for attendance.
Got it. Uh, Mr. Bucowski. Mr. Bucowski.
He's on mute.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mrs. Carmody.
Present.
Mrs. Tepiana.
Present.
Dernowski.
Here.
Mrs. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Dernowski.
Here.
Mr. Salvo.
Present.
Mr. O'Shannon.
Here.
We're all present.
All right, and Linda, you need to perhaps include our three student reps also.
Okay. Reverend Mesea.
Here.
Brett Shogr.
Present.
Amaret Carr.
Here.
We're all here.
Thank you. I shall begin. I'm going to call for a moment of silence in memory of the following people who recently passed away. Mary Lou Deronowski, who is the wife of Board of Education member Dave Deronowski. She retired on December thirty first, two thousand seventeen, after thirty-one years of service as a parent professional at many schools in the Southington School District. Her retirement, who is a volunteer at O'Shannon Elementary. James Urban, who was hired in two thousand and two as a security guard at the high school and worked for the district until two thousand and four. Kathy Tuskowski, who worked for the school district as a secretary for nineteen years and retired in November of nineteen ninety-nine as a secretary for the Special Education and Transportation Department. Eugene Nebiola, who was a community member, a D.C. at Saint Dominic's Church. He was a former elected official, serving on the Board of Education from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen eighty-three, and as chairman during his last four years. Harry Karosty, father of former Board of Education chairman Brian Karosty. He passed away on April nineteenth in complications as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic virus. He worked for many years as a superintendent after his retirement. Art Rich, who was a well-known community member and a prominent professional educator. He was the school supervisor for Southington Public School and for Southington High School graduate from then-year. He passed away on April the fourteenth in complications from the COVID-nineteen pandemic virus. Richard Jutress, brother of Debbie Elbada, Deputy Assistant to the Superintendent. He passed away on April third in complications from the COVID-nineteen virus. I would also ask that this moment of silence include all those who have been affected by the COVID-nineteen virus. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. I would also like to thank all of our health care workers, education and caring, our first responders to the shift. Thank you. Heart is inadequate, but I do want to thank. Also, to those students taking care of those in need, citizens of the town of Southington for their integrity, as always. I would also like to take a moment to thank our administration for keeping our community informed and the confidence of many. And I would like to offer a special congratulations to those teachers who have had to adapt to distant learning and keep in touch with their students to ensure them that they are doing their best. That is very, very important. And to the students out there, you are doing a great job. Don't stress, seek help when needed, and just do your best as all your teachers want. And finally, to the parents. I'm certain there have been some interesting exchanges as you help your kids with their schoolwork. Some days are better than others, but together, we're all learning. And even if you get frustrated, remember, you still have to cook dinner for your children. Thank you. We will then go to the approval of the Board of Education minutes from March twelfth. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass. I also need a motion for the Special Board of Education meeting held via teleconference on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, next we go to communications from the public on agenda items. Mr. Canellen.
So let me, let me take a moment to check, Mrs. Carmody, right this moment. I do not see any additional communications that have come in from the public relative to agenda items.
You do not have any?
No, we don't have any. If people do still want, I mean, perhaps we should give it a couple of minutes or I can continue to check and we can, and we can come, I can let you know. We can come back to it, but as it stands right now, we do not have communications on agenda items from the public.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll move on and then you just let me know if you want to.
Thank you.
All right, communication from Board of Education members? If you raise your hand so that I can tell if anyone has anything to say. And I see, James, you've joined us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Communication from administration?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. Let's move. The very first thing that we have this evening, wanted to do a little bit of an update on our distance learning plan. And, you know, you've been receiving communications from a number of the administrators, particularly from Mr. Medancy and from I, for myself, about the distance learning plan and the various steps in the evolution as such. What I'd like to do tonight is call Mr. Medancy to give us a, as concise, an update as he can. It's a, it's relatively complex and, as I said, has been evolving over time. So, Mr. Medancy, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canellen. You know, as Mrs. Carmody said at the outset of this, you know, I'd like to start by just thanking our teachers and administrators and really all of the bargaining units and central office staff for working so collaboratively in such a unique situation with very little notice or timeline to undergo such a task. Sherri's worked with all the bargaining units, you know, the administration and, you know, supporting their staff at the building levels, you know, and just, it's, it's been a tremendous undertaking. And our teachers, Mrs. Carmody, you're right, have, have been heroes throughout this in trying to rise to the occasion and support our students from a distance. With that being said, you know, one of our challenges was the short notice in closing the schools and deploying devices over time in a safe manner. And so our initial iterations of distance learning limited the amount of synchronous learning opportunities we could provide our students because not all students had access yet to devices to attend live classes. That was also coupled with some of the support that we needed to provide for our staff, particularly of our younger students because they don't readily rely on this type of technology for like a Google Classroom or Canvas, you know, learning management system with kindergarten, first, second, third grade students. Our six, twelve students are much more versed in this and much more comfortable with that type of learning management system because many of them have been exposed to one or the other over time. With that being said, you know, we had the initial iteration of distance learning and there were varying levels of synchronous connections with students in terms of morning meetings or recorded lessons or Google Slides with voiceovers and what have you. That has evolved into our latest iteration, which is what we call our Distance Learning two point oh. And really what it's meant to do is increase the amount of synchronous engagement. Not necessarily actual lessons. We have teachers that are sometimes recording lessons so that the students can access those lessons at any time because they may be sharing a device with a sibling. We have many instances where we have multiple children in the household sharing a device. And so it's very difficult for, you know, if Trevor and his brother have a class being held at the same time and they had one device, they can't both get it in onto that class. And as you can imagine, that would cause some stress in some households. And so we're trying to be creative about providing multiple opportunities throughout the week and day for students to connect with their teachers. Some have more exposure to some teachers than others. Some of that has to do with the comfort level and the technical capacity and expertise of the teacher. But our goal for certain with this next iteration, starting on, just started this past Monday, is to provide more opportunities for our staff members to connect with students virtually. You know, as I said to our administrative team yesterday and the day before as we were meeting, you know, our students, you know, there can be arguments made to what's a more effective model of teaching synchronous and asynchronous. And for those of you, just as, as a quick heads up, asynchronous is kind of, it doesn't happen in the moment. It could be a recorded lesson, a video, you know, something like that that's pushed out that a student could do at any time. Synchronous kind of happens in the moment. You can ask questions as you have them. You get feedback in real time. And as our students, you know, we can argue over the, of, of, over the effectiveness of each, but one thing that we all agree on is as our students are forced to live in isolation, they crave contact that keeps them connected, their staff and their students, you know, their classmates. And so we are trying to increase that and we're going to continue to try and, try and increase that. Rebecca was on this call earlier tonight, Rebecca Savalkow. She and the, all of the teachers who have stepped up right behind her that are willing to assist their colleagues have been, you know, absolute heroes in providing the technical assistance and support and professional development to our teachers whenever asked and whatever is needed. We're providing live tutoring for our teachers even in order to get them to a comfort level of engaging in synchronous lessons with, with their students, K-12 across the board. And so with that being said, that is the goal here. I know there were some conversations in the community about our grading practices during this time. All of the guidance we've gotten up to this point, starting with the State Department of Education, my collaboration with several superintendents and assistant superintendents in surrounding districts, NIASC, the NCAA, and institutions of higher education are recommending pass fail at this time. That causes concern for people who are used to the traditional grading system because they're looking at how that plays out in the current admissions process for higher education. Institutions of higher education across the board have indicated that they all recognize what a unique situation this is and that this marking period would not taint or treat students any differently in an admission process should districts choose to go that route. And a quote that I got from a recent Ed Week article that I really liked is that if you're administering letter grades during this time, where, think about the situation I just explained to you. Children may be sharing a device, don't have access to a device, limited internet access, staying with grandparents, why essential workers who are parents are going to work, stress in the household because family members may be sick, you may have family members unemployed, small business owners taking a hit and causing stress in the household. The quote said, if you're grading students right now with letter grades, you're grading the circumstances in their household. And because those who have and can will, and those who do not won't. And it's very important that we give all of our students every opportunity to be successful. But with that being said, we are going to be watching very closely in the next couple of weeks for further guidance from the State Department of Education, particularly with regards to institutions of higher education. They are working actively, not only, I was in a webinar recently, not only with Connecticut State Universities, but with institutions of higher education, those organ, larger organizations that govern them across the U.S. Because, just because Connecticut universities agree that this is okay and they, you know, our students may not all be going to school in Connecticut. You know, so we, they are working regionally and collaboratively, the, the State Department of Education with institutions of higher education and other education agencies across the nation. So we feel very comfortable with that. Interestingly enough, you know, we felt comfortable with this decision early on and, and many of the districts I was collaborating with were indicating, because they weren't getting much guidance at that time from the state or from the NCAA or from NIASC about what is recommended. And since all of that guidance has come out, they have all shifted course in a more so following suit with, with what we're doing now in Southington. Even my own kids' district where I live here has recently changed course and is going that route as well. We do continue with, in terms of the the expectations of students to get feedback from their teachers. So just because they may not be getting a letter grade, they should be getting feedback on how they're doing. Sometimes they might solicit that feedback during a teacher's office hours or a study session or, or through an email to a staff member. And also in other times where they're live lessons, they have the opportunity to engage and get feedback in real time. Feedback is, is just as important as a letter grade and if our kids know how they're doing and if their learning matters, that will certainly, you know, help to guide the teacher to make informed decisions about what the lesson design will look like the following day or day after, depending on how the students are responding. So that's all I have at this time.
Well, thank you. That, that really does explain an awful lot and I hope that there are parents that are listening because that certainly will answer many of the questions that we are receiving or hearing as we get emails or whatever. So thank you very much for that, Steve. I appreciate that. Ben, here? Yes, who's, who's, Bob, go ahead. Who?
I, I have a question. It's Bob, Bob Brown.
Yes, okay, Bob.
Steve, can you hear me?
Yep.
This may be looking way down the road, but I was thinking today about, you know, I, I, we don't know what's going to happen, but say we come back in the fall and start a regular school year. There's going to be, especially I'm looking at high school courses, like a math course, some significant curriculum changes I would think would have to happen to check on what happened in the second half of this year, et cetera. Are those discussions, you've had it all yet or is that just too early for that? Would it be one from a district or would that be an individual teacher?
Sure. That's a great question. So we have actually, I've already started with talking with the coordinators because based on, the term we use is truncating the curriculum. So teasing out the essential standards and concepts right now and making sure that we spiral those into either a course where this was, I'll use algebra as an example, in Algebra II where some of the Algebra I content may be prerequisite knowledge so that it gets spiraled back into the curriculum in the fall. But with that being said, we know we already have dense curriculums, you know. Anybody who's a teacher knows the pressure of just, you know, covering the entire curriculum that they have within any given academic year. And so with that being said, we've got to be careful in terms of spiraling in, but, but keeping our eyes on what is essential. The state has also said, relative to all content areas and, and state adopted standards sets, that they will be providing guidance relative to essential curriculum as well. So I think between our collaboration with the State Department of Education and our coordinators, and we do envision bringing teachers in, if it's safe to do so over the summer, to really review what was truncated out of the curriculum and what is essential to bring forward to either. I'll give you an example. If you're a fourth grader, what third grade, third trimester material is essential to reintroduce in the fall and spiral? Because clearly, the state has said, assume that every child could benefit from the spiraling of that curriculum. Don't assume that some kids need it and some don't. With that being said, we know differentiation will, will be more important than ever because some kids who right now are getting it and moving along and have good supports may not need as much of that spiraling and may be ready for more right plans in September, but others may not have had the access to support and need that extra gift of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Joe has one.
Mr. Bucowski.
Joe, I think, or am I missing? Yes, Joe?
Thank you, Joe Bazuski. So Steve, one quick question. So the asynchronous versus asynchronous learning, do you find that there may be benefit in perhaps, I guess, isolating certain courses to be completely asynchronous? So that we're avoiding the, the overlap things and potentially allowing students to do it at their own time? So essentially, I, I know with us, luckily, my wife and I, we've been able to to sort of time our schedule so that somebody's always at home to be able to help the kids. Granted that they're younger too, but thinking about the kids that are twelve, thirteen, maybe their grandparents aren't able to help them and, you know, they have to wait until their parents get home, you know, is, is there benefit in sort of standardizing certain courses to do that synchronous routine or, or versus asynchronous?
Sure. Joe, that's a great question and it's something we struggle with a lot because in the community, as I'm sure some of you may be noting, some people want everything to be synchronous and they want kids sitting up behind the computer six to seven periods a day in classes, live the whole time, you know. If, if I'm going to look at our student reps and, and I would tell you, I'd be shocked if any one of them wants to sit behind a screen six, you know, six, seven periods a day for the entire class period because of just, you know, we call it screen drain, you know, spending a little too much time behind the screen. But with that being said, the question is, is wonderful because it's literally the conversation we've been having as an administrative team about when you offer a synchronous lesson, recording that lesson so that if a child can't be present or participate because either device sharing or just like you said, home circumstances depend on age, childcare, or what have you, the child can access that lesson at a later time. Usually those are posted with the Google Classroom, so it allows them that anywhere, anytime learning. We've been very cognizant about not requiring students to attend synchronous lessons. Just in some cases, in certain high school courses, they're highly encouraging it because the content may be complex and it's really hard to provide the students the support they might need if they're watching a recorded video and they have to follow up at a later date or time with questions. But Joe, for your, to your point, especially asynchronous for our younger students, we tend to see it much more as the go-to strategy. Much of the feedback I got on, after sending out Sunday's message was from parents who are young students who, even if the lesson design is very easily attainable developmentally for that child and academically, they still have to try and help their child navigate through that device, access of the device, the links, the classroom. In many cases, we're using parent email accounts, which doesn't admit them to the meeting, so then they have to get admitted by the teacher. And it just gets to be complex, right? And developmentally, our kids can struggle with that at a very young age. So we're really trying to find the balance that the synchronous opportunities still allow the kids to feel connected to their classmates and their teacher, but it doesn't put so much stress on parents and families who have to navigate through this distance learning as they're still working and providing childcare and navigating through device access. So that's a great question and, and we definitely wrestle with that daily about finding that balance so that we don't burden our families too much, but we provide enough access to provide the kids the support they need in real time as well.
Well, thanks, Steve. Appreciate that.
Yep.
And did anyone, Dave Falvo, I'm sure. I thought I missed you before. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Dave Falvo here. Is there a way that students could opt in for a letter grade, particularly those students that are taking AP classes and ECE classes and honors classes? Would they be able to do that? That's something that we did at my school because we, there were definitely, definitely concerns around. If we didn't, if they just went to a pass fail, that it would negatively affect them going on for, in regards to class rank and their GPA.
Yeah. And so playing that out, Dave, those students who opt in or in the AP courses would have an advantage with GPA and class rank, right? And, and those who don't have that support and access would certainly be at a disadvantage. In addition to that, literally this week, UConn ECE sent out something saying they are accepting both for credit and as for transcript, pass fail for students in those courses. So, and so has AP indicated that as well. So there's not really a big advantage to students or should there be if they are opting in for that? Because if we know it doesn't affect admissions and we know they both AP and ECE, UConn are saying they're accepting pass fail, then in our case, we want to continue with what we're doing for all students.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Missy has a question.
Missy?
Yeah, Steve, I just have a question. How are the, the, the students with IEPs and the disabilities? How are they doing at home, those who had a?
That's a great question, Missy.
Assistance when they weren't to them right now.
Yeah, that's a great question and, and really a complex one. I will tell you, our special education teachers are going, I don't want to say above and beyond because I think everybody is, but I think they are working really hard and faced with some really unique challenges based on the needs of the students that they're servicing. And I've seen them all doing everything they can to try and meet the needs virtually where they can. With that being said, we know that some of the needs of our students are more complex than we could ever provide in a distance learning model. And for those students, we do plan on obviously talking about what compensatory education would look like for them to make up for that maybe of the loss of the instruction that they had to endure during the time of, of distance learning. That's something that Meg and her department has been working on consistently. But as, as I watch special ed teachers do their thing right now, I have never been more impressed by a committed group of individuals. The amount of, it, it almost requires individual contact on your caseload. It's not like you're pulling a class of students together. And the amount of contact that they're making and the unique ways that they're engaging with students and their families has been tremendous. But yes, there are certainly still kids that we are not able to meet their needs in a, a distance learning model. Even some of the support services that we would provide in addition to the IP, beyond just the teaching and learning, some of the counseling, some of the therapies and whatnot, that is stuff that it's hard to do from a distance. And so we, and that's not unique to Southington, unfortunately. Everybody that, you know, has that. But something that I'm proud of the work our special ed teachers have done, but still something after this closure ends, a lot of work will need to be done at the district level to, with those families and students to try and catch students up where necessary.
Mrs. Carmody.
Any other board members? Mr. Canellen?
I, I just wanted to follow up with regard to students with disabilities. I've said this numerous times to our, to our staff. We are going to have students who need compensatory education and I don't mean in terms of the number of hours. If you were supposed to get five hours and you only got one hour. Students are going to need time and they're going to need services. A lot of our support services are going to be necessary in the compensatory education genre, if you will. That's it. And we're going to do that. I mean, I think that's a commitment that we need to make as a district so that our students with disabilities and their, their parents understand that we're going to do our very best to make sure that we get additional services to those students. That is going to be an additional cost to this school district that is not present right now in the budget because of course in October, when we started planning this and in January, when the board adopted a budget, we had no idea that this was going to happen. So one of the things we've had some conversations about is our, if, if there are, and I believe there will be, unexpended funds at the end of the school year and the Board of Finance agrees once again to put these in a non-lapsing account instead of just expending those dollars on equipment and special projects, I think we're, we're going to need to be able to spend some of those funds for the unanticipated and unbudgeted compensatory education services, which I believe are going to be quite extensive and expensive. So that's, that's one of the things going, you know, looking down the road. I think there's a misconception right now that, you know, school districts are saving all this money, yada, yada, yada. Well, clearly there will be some unexpended balance from certain things that are not occurring. from certain things that are not occurring right now, but there are going to be additional expenditures. And on top of that, I'm, I'm not sure that we're going to be done with this. And I think we're going to need to bolster our efforts in distance learning. We're going to need to acquire additional devices and make sure that going forward, if this were to occur again, or if we're in this situation, could very well be as soon as this fall or early winter, we are better prepared with the amount of devices that we have, et cetera, and the training for, training for our staff. So there's a, there are a number of things there that are, that are interconnected. But basically, we're going to make sure that we do absolutely everything that's required to support our students with disabilities. And I wanted to make sure that parents of students with disabilities hear that and understand. That's, that's our commitment as a school district to these students.
Thank you, Mr. Canelon. Any other, Mr. Darrenowski?
Yes, you know, in light of the detail of this update, I would recommend that this become an agenda item so that we can put it on the agenda so that we can make it open to the public. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of information here, very good information. But I think rather than just having it as an administrative report, it should be an agenda item for the foreseeable future until we get back into a regular meeting schedule.
You mean an agenda item as to what we're going to be doing extra for these students?
No, 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 no. This, this update was very good. But I believe it should be an agenda item rather than just an administrative report. You know, there's a lot of detail here rather than just general information.
Okay, well, Mr. Canelon, you can take note of that and we can add that to our next meeting. You know, put that on our agenda. Thank you, Dave. Any other board members before Mr. Canelon continues with his report?
Joe's got something.
Who? Joe, I'm sorry.
Thanks, thanks, Terry.
I didn't, Joe, I'm doing my best.
So, so Tim, just sort of a follow-up question to what you were talking about. So with that expected increase in costs that we're most likely going to see and whether that happens over the course of the summer or, or as it sort of spills into the fall, have we reached out to any of our representatives at the state level to sort of see if there's, if they're at least thinking about that to provide some sort of, I guess, assistance? Because I know that we've, we've talked at length in previous board meetings about inconsistencies with the level of funding and things like that, especially when it comes to special education. So I just think it might behoove us to, I guess, perhaps work with other districts and not so much as lobby, but follow the right paths to sort of put that on their radar so that, you know, again, we could continue to move forward with what we're doing and not be setback, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars or, you know, whatever that looks like.
So, so in answer to your question, the short answer is yes. And we've actually been working very closely with the Commissioner's Office and the State Department of Education. In the Commissioner's phone conference on Tuesday, actually, that was one of the things that he, he brought forward. There's been a tremendous partnership from the, from the Commissioner's Office and the State Department of Education to the, to the Governor's Office and obviously Department of Public Health. And the, the communications are such that the Commissioner continues to make sure people understand that there are going to be needs moving forward. So that's been a, that's been a consistent message. And, and I've got to say, I think the Commissioner has just done an amazing job handling all this. And I can't, I couldn't be more impressed with and grateful for the efforts of the State Department of Education and their support of public school districts. They've been timely. They, they tell us all the time, they don't have all the answers. We provide questions, provide ideas. They funnel it through. They've been doing everything that they possibly can to support districts. And, and this is certainly one of them. We've had those discussions. And I know that Ms. Walsh has been very involved, continued to be involved with the Advisory Council and that's, that's clearly an issue that has come up and, and there's a lot of discussion about it. And I think people really understand that, A, this is very, very, very difficult for everyone and it's even more difficult for our students with disabilities and our parents of students with disabilities and our special education and support services staff. So we're having those discussions and I, I have been pleased with the, with the results so far, quite frankly. And then we'll, we'll see what that looks like down the road. I don't, I don't think there's a way that we could accurately estimate what that's going to look like right now. I think that's going to evolve as, as we're able to get back and get our students back and understand where they are when we get them back versus where they were on March 13th, when they left us.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Canelon, would you like to complete your administrative report?
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. The second item that I have is actually a very quick one. It's, it's very positive. We just wanted the board to know that the closeout of the South End Elementary School partial roof replacement is completed. That was filed with the state officially by Mr. Romano just, just prior to the April break. So that, that's good. That's one project that was, that was closed out. And I, I believe that there's some final reimbursement there that the town will, you know, will apply for. Our third item on this has to do with, this is recent information and I'm going to turn to Mrs. Danello to talk a little bit about electric and oil contracts in the future, not too far future, but in the future. So Mrs. Danello, if you would, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to update the board to let you know that we are trying to take advantage of some of the pricing changes that are occurring, unfortunately due to what's happening. We had locked into our oil contract for the 2021 year back in January. That price was $2.03 a gallon. But we have decided to lock in for the 2122 year because prices have dropped to $1.76. So for us to lock in, you know, that far out, you know, you're hearing obviously how low the oil prices are going, but in an effort to try to buy this far in advance, that's the best pricing we could get at this point. But we did think it was important to take advantage of that. And in addition, Alberio Energy, who is the commodities manager for both the town and the Board of Education, went out to bid for our generation of electricity pricing because those prices have dropped significantly. And although the process has not completed yet, the last update I received earlier this week is that potentially we would be going with a extending, extending out, well, I should say entering into a new contract. Our current contract expires in November of 2021, but we're looking for a three-year term potentially with Constellation that would provide an overall three-year savings to both the town and the board combined of approximately $478,000. It's about $160,000 annual savings a year for both the town and the board combined. So vendors don't like to lose load. So our current vendor, they're going back and they're doing some negotiations back and forth on our behalf with Alberio, but it does look like we should be in a very good place with electricity moving forward.
Thank you, Sheri.
Okay, Mrs. Danello, you're all set?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. So our, our fourth item concerns alternative end of year celebrations and the planning of those. This is obviously incredibly difficult, especially for our high school seniors. Trevor, I'm looking right at you when I say that. But it's also difficult for our kindergartners or fifth graders who are making a transition to sixth grade or eighth graders who are making a transition to high school, some not to our high schools, some to private school or magnet schools. So our, our staff are really going to take a look at how we can, how we can create, not the same celebrations, because you, you just can't, you just can't reproduce faithfully the, the in-person types of celebrations that we have. And it really doesn't look like that's going to be possible for us. Now, I just heard today in the Governor's news conference that they're, they're looking at the possibility of beginning to ease restrictions at the beginning of June. I also heard from the Commissioner of Education on Tuesday that they're, they're putting, they're, they're continuing to put off any decision about the rest of the school year, continuing to gather information, watch the, you know, watch all of the cases, et cetera, et cetera. But they're also laying out some, some very specific parameters for what would entail a return to school, a return to work, et cetera. A lot of those, you've heard all of this, you know, testing, appropriate PPE, you know, et cetera. So we're working on that. Mr. Pepe's been meeting and Mr. Pepe is, is here this evening. He can certainly speak for himself later on if he would like, but he's been meeting with students and various groups of students and he's going to continue to do so. As, as a team, we're meeting Monday at Southington High School to discuss options, options for graduation and some of those other celebrations. Because it's not just graduation, you know? We have the military luncheon that we usually do. We have all, all sorts of, you usually have a list of end of year activities that, that come to board members at this meeting, at the April meeting usually. So all of that's going to look a little different and our job is to look at what options we have and how, how we can celebrate our students who are involved in all of those activities. That's, that's not going to be easy and we have to get a little creative with that. I do have a positive note. It's, it's one little, it's a little start, but I, I wanted to report on it. So the idea came to me, actually I have to thank Mr. Baczewski and Cipriano who shared with me some information about high schools locally and I guess around the country, turning on their stadium lights at 8:20 in the evening. 8:20 is the equivalent of 2020 military time. And burning, burning those lights for 20 minutes and 20 seconds. All of that in honor of our graduating class of 2020. So we, we looked at that and come to find out our stadium lights actually are only manual operations. They turn on manually, they're shut off manually. So we don't have the timer effect. That would entail literally calling someone in off hours to, to come in and do that. So I have to say that Mrs. Romano came up with a really, a great idea. Why can't we use the scoreboard, which can really show the numbers 2020? And so Mr. Romano explored that. We have some really talented electricians on staff. Because it wasn't, we couldn't do it exactly and they, they figured out a way to do it. They tested it last night and at 8:20 it came on and it burned till 8:40 plus 20 seconds.
That's great.
We're going to assume the 20 seconds. So, so that's set and I think that's a, I think that's a wonderful idea. And we'll see how that goes, you know? Maybe we expand on that down the road. But I thought that was, that was a great idea, especially because you don't have to inter-